Take it to order. And first thing we have is we have our invocation. We have Pastor DJ Coles of Seymour Johnson here. So DJ, if you would, come up and do the invocation. And we certainly appreciate you doing this for us tonight. If you would, everyone, please stand.
With a sincere and humble heart will you pray with me? Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this assembly and for your presence within this assembly. We ask that you would guide our actions as believers. Give us an eagerness to be humble, an eagerness for understanding, and an eagerness to be gentle. We also ask that you give us an eagerness to be firm, an eagerness to be flexible, and an eagerness to be unified. Help us have hearts of patience and withstanding. Thank you for the hope that we have in you, and may your hope unify our thoughts and decision-making. May you also invoke peace through this time. We ask it with sincere and humble hearts. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the body of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seated, please. Next, we have our roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor President A.
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Rodway.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Hunter Foster.
Present.
Councilmember A.
Here.
We're all here. Next, we have the approval amendments of November 6th, 2017, and November 20th, 2017, for approval.
Sir.
Second.
Sir.
Any discussion? All of everybody raise your right hand. opposed, same. Motion carries six one. Next, we have presentations. We have the Wayne County Museum. And Jennifer, I'm just gonna call you up. I'm about to try your last name. But when you get up here, you can tell us your last name. How about that? I don't wanna mess it up. I should've practiced ahead of time.
Certainly. Thank you, mayor and council. My name is Jennifer Kikeandall.
No, I would've never got that.
It's Dutch, yeah. I'm Jennifer Kikeandall, and I did go to Eastern Wayne High School. But I've been in St. Louis for the last 25 years, working in museums there. And I'm the new executive director of the Wayne County Museum. So I wanted to introduce myself to all of you, and introduce myself to the community, and tell you what's going on. I'm really excited to return to Goldsboro at a time when the city seems to be really undergoing a renaissance, and the museum is undergoing a similar rebirth. And I'd like to be a part of that positive change. So in that regard, we're reopening. We are gonna be closing tomorrow. Starting tomorrow, we're gonna be closed for two weeks. We're gonna be revamping all the galleries. We're gonna be doing reinstillations of the permanent exhibitions. And we're gonna be reopening on February 6th with a new Black History exhibition that will be running for two months. And it's called Forging Ahead: Groundbreaking Pioneers and Entrepreneurs in Wayne County's Black History. We have been talking to advisors like former mayor Al King and other members of the community. And it's going to focus on people, visionaries and groundbreakers who have really made a change and have had a positive influence on the African-American community here. And we're doing a lot of community outreach. And it's gonna reopen on the 6th. The exhibit will open at 4:00 p.m. And at 7:00 p.m., we're gonna have programming that our friend Maximili Mazingo has helped us coordinate. We're gonna have motivational speakers, some young local entrepreneurs. We're gonna have artisans, vendors selling their works. We're gonna have a DJ. We're gonna have refreshments. So we'd really like to do outreach to younger people and to families. It's gonna be a family-friendly event. And we hope that all of you will come. We'd like to invite everybody in the community to come check out the museum. It's gonna be a different museum. It's gonna be, have a new attitude, along with a new staff. It's got a facelift inside and hopefully outside in our programming and in our inclusivity. You're really gonna see a difference. So we'd like to invite you to join us. Thank you.
We look forward to all your efforts. And appreciate what the museum does and means to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we're gonna have our Gold Star Awards.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The purpose of the Golden Star Award is to recognize city employees for their contribution to the city of Goldsboro. Its primary aim is to award employees for going above and beyond the normal scope of duties, as well as it's promoting the organization's values and beliefs of integrity, professionalism, collaboration, and quality of life. The Star evaluation should specifically focus on job-related outputs and accomplishments in customer service, problem-solving, and teamwork. At this time, I would like for the nominees for the December 2017 Star Awards to come forward.
Captain Holland, if you would, come on up. Tyler Reva and Alex Riker. You guys, and Tyler and Alex, and Captain, if you could stand here. Mayor, City Council, good to see you tonight. My name's Eric Lancaster, Assistant Chief on B-Shift. And the guys that I had nominated is from my Engine Four crew, which is, they're out of the Harris Street. Captain Holland and Alex Riker and Tyler Lamb. Also, Heskey Johnson, he was unable to be with us tonight due to a family obligation. But he was just as much part of this crew in what I'm fixing to tell you what happened. Very proud of these guys. Captain Holland, he would not be eligible, but he was awarded this within the past 12 months. But I did want to recognize him too, 'cause he was, he was part of what I'm fixing to tell you about. This account comes from Captain Holland, and it's something that I had found on a fire report, and also called him and talked to him about. And plus, he had sent it to me in his monthly report. But I'm gonna go ahead and read what he had put. "We responded to a grass fire on Christmas Day on South Slocum Street. Upon arrival, there was a young man, 13-years-old, that was out there putting the fire out. After a lengthy discussion with him, his mom and a police officer that was standing by, we determined that he was the one that had set the fire, and that he had set several fires there before. While attempting to figure out what was going on with the young man, we found out some troubling news. He had been a straight-A student, president of Bay to the Club, and really excelling in all areas of life. However, about six months ago, his grandfather passed away, and everything changed. Not only was this young, was he this young man's father figure, but he also assisted the family that is living in Seymour Homes financially. To say things have been different for him ever since is kind of an understatement. This young man did not have anything to do to occupy his time. His grades were starting to suffer, and he was suffering some troubles because of their financial situation. He had went back into the backyard to play in the grass, which led him to setting a small fire because he was bored. He did not want to be out playing with his friends because he was embarrassed and did not want to be picked on because he did not have anything for Christmas. This tugged at our hearts a little bit. I asked the police officer, could he assist this young man with some sort of program so he did not get lost? And the officer told him that there really wasn't much he could do as far as program-wise for him. We reached out to a few people in the community, and they were all dead ends as well. So we did all we knew to do. We took matters in our own hands. We took up a collection from us four guys. We went to Walmart the next morning, and they opened, and bought this kid some Christmas. We asked Captain Whitney to deliver the goods the next day and to talk with this kid about possibly joining the Goldsboro Fire Department Explorer Program. I hope that this kid had a better Christmas, and most importantly, hopefully, he will get his life back on the right track. I could not have been more proud of my people. If you want to talk about professionalism, integrity, and customer focus, well, these guys delivered all three in a big way. So I present to you my Station 4 crowd I'm really proud of."
That's great. All right, come on, Alex.
That's a great story. Thank you for all you do, and thanks for what you did.
All right, so let's get a picture. Tyler, that's your bucket. And then I wanna get one of y'all, you. Smile. Let's get one, Eric, of y'all, all y'all.
Okay.
Before y'all come out here. Jennifer, you can come over here.
Do you wanna be in?
No, I'll go. Are y'all smiling?
We got one more?
Good evening, council members. On November 30th, Fire Station 1 was contacted by Ms. Tiffany Martin about a wish for her son, Reed Malo Martin, a five-year-old that was diagnosed with stage IV brain cancer. His wish was to ride on the fire truck during the Christmas parade. After speaking with Chief Fire 4, the event was approved. He was gonna arrive the day of the Christmas parade, riding the fire truck so he could see everyone during the Christmas parade. I let the members of the station know Captain Walker, Captain Gardner, Engineer Collier, Senior Firefighter Bass, Senior Firefighter Plummer, and Senior Firefighter Hodges of the event that would take place the following day. Upon that, the idea was brought up that, hey, we can do something more than just letting him ride the fire truck. So the idea started rolling. We were able to acquire a small set of turnout gear. We went to J.C. Penney and bought him a white shirt. In turn, we also had collar brass and a badge applied to his shirt. So Mr. Reed arrived, Mr. Martin arrived that day, we decided that it was our duty to make him an honorary firefighter. So that day, once he arrived, Mr. Martin, at the same time, the police department was doing their pre-parade briefing. So we did our swearing-in ceremony in the classroom in front of approximately 25 police officers. That day, he was dressed as Cat Boy from PJ Mask, and it's the only swearing-in ceremony I've ever been to where he answered meow for every answer. Mr. Martin, that day, toured the fire station. He wore his turnout gear, assisted in extinguishing a small fire. The members of the station decided Mr. Reed would be better suited to riding the front of the fire truck during the parade so everyone could see him. The members of the station went above and beyond the request of the family. I believe they all went above and beyond to make the event one that Reed would always I believe it was not only a day Reed would remember, but also every employee. These guys right here still follow up on Reed. Yesterday, we went to Duke Children's Hospital, and Reed has been in a coma for the last 14 days. We spent time with their family, and I think it was something that the family didn't expect. These guys came up with the idea, so I give them all the credit for everything they come up with to make that a day he would remember.
Thank you. Good job.
I did wanna comment first before I do this, is that this one I'm a little more involved, because at the Christmas parade, I was there, and I saw this kid at the fire truck. Of course, I just saw the kid riding the fire truck, and he looked really happy, and his mom was behind him, and then I heard the story. And when you hear this story, I mean, it really makes a difference, it really touches your heart. But what I do wanna tell you, I don't know why these guys are getting anything special for this, because they do this day in, day out. It's just the fire department, it's the police department, it's just the garbage bin. All our folks are going the extra mile, day in, day out. So it does my heart good that we're able to do something for y'all. But I want our citizens to know that y'all are doing this every day, and you're doing it because it's the kind of people you are. I mean, and you mean it from your heart. And I hear and see all the time the good things that our city employees do. So I'm glad that we're able to recognize you and the ones that will come before you and after you, because it does make a difference, and we do appreciate it.
All right, Hunter.
You got a deal, right?
Move left. Clay. Tim.
Yeah, see, my man's got a name. First time I seen him smile in a while.
Blake. Chris. Let's get one of all y'all in here a little bit.
Thanks, guys. A big thank you for all of that.
All right, next, we got a public hearing. Z118 Timothy Hathcock, West Side of Glenwood Trail, East Ash Street, and Elm Street. Jennifer?
Item D is Z118 Timothy Hathcock. The property is located on the west side of Glenwood Trail between East Ash Street and Elm Street. The applicant's requesting a zoning change from office residence to R6 Residential Conditional District to allow the development of two duplex apartment buildings. Development plans are submitted and looking for approval separately. There's a frontage of 209 feet, with the total area being 4.7 acres, or .47 acres. The surrounding zoning to the north, you have neighborhood and general business; to the south, R9 residential; to the east, R9 residential and neighborhood business; and to the west, general business and R9 residential. The property is indicated on the map in the black hatched area. Currently, the property is vacant, and the land use, adopted land use comprehensive plan designates the property for multi-use, which would permit a mix of light commercial, office, and residential uses to serve a localized area. City water and sanitary sewer is available to the subject property. Zoning for this property was changed from R6 residential to office residence in 1980. This is an aerial photography of the property. Submitted site and landscape plans detail the development to include two one-story structures containing 1,949 square feet each. Each structure would contain two bedroom units containing 956 square feet and 993 square feet. A parking lot between the two buildings will contain a total of eight parking spaces, which is two per unit, with concrete walkways leading from the parking area to the individual units. Street trees are proposed along Glenwood Trail frontage, and additional plant material will be installed as five-foot-wide buffers along the northern, southern, and western property lines. With the use of a six-foot-tall privacy fence, planted buffers may be reduced by half. The applicant has requested modifications of the buffer widths in several areas which abut either residential or commercial properties from 15 or 20 feet to the five-foot-wide Type A buffer shown within the fenced area. The height of the proposed fence within the front yard setbacks will have to be reduced to three feet, six inches, in order to allow for site distance. Five-foot-wide concrete sidewalks are shown along Glenwood Trail frontage, and the submitted elevation plans show brick front walls with the remaining sides containing horizontal siding. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for the council meeting on February the 5th.
Any questions? If not, this is a public hearing. The applicant is requesting a zoning change from office residence to R6 Residential Conditional District to allow the development of two duplex apartment buildings. Would anyone like to speak for or against? Would anyone like to speak? All right, we're gonna close this public hearing. And since we have no more public hearings, we're gonna first welcome the Planning Commission, since I didn't do that already, and thank you for coming. And now, we're gonna excuse you. And when is the meeting? Next Monday at 7:00. Okay. So if anybody from the public would like to come, the Planning Commission will meet next Monday at 7:00 on this, and then they'll have a recommendation at our next meeting. So we appreciate the Planning Commission for what they do, and I'm sure the applicant will appreciate y'all coming in for this. Thank you. Okay, this brings us to our public comment period. So this is the time that anybody from the audience can come up and speak for three minutes about anything you'd like to. So does anybody like to speak from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, ma'am.
I am representing the senior Tar Heel legislators tonight. I am the Wayne County representative. And in last October, I was in Chapel Hill and had the privilege to hear SBI Special Agent. Did you get it passed around? I think you just, you received a smaller version of this paper. The special agent is Gray Fullwood, and she will be coming here on Wednesday and will be at the Senior Center at 10:30. Will be speaking on our opioid epidemic. And I would like to encourage you folks to come if you possibly can. She, it'll be about a 45-minute talk. We're not even in her district, and she has gotten permission to come down here to speak. She's probably one of the most dynamic speakers I have ever heard in all my years of going to conferences, of school conferences and whatever else. But I think it'll be well worth your time to come. We're wanting to have a large crowd for her, since she is coming in from Granville County. She is, has 12 counties under her. She's graduate of state in chemical, something, engineering or something. But anyway, she's been with the SBI since 1999, and has been with this drug group since 2004. But a very dynamic speaker, and she passed this out to us. It's a picture of a teenager, and it says she gets her hair from her mom, her eyes from her dad, and her drugs from her grandma's purse. And this is a big problem. The drugs are getting stolen from grandparents, from, you know, wherever. But she will be speaking on the epidemic that is in North Carolina as well as statewide. And I would just encourage you folks, if you could come, to come join us, and I think you will appreciate what she has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Martin. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Evans.
I rise to bring you and others in our listening audience a perspective on Black History Month before the mayor does the resolution. Oftentimes, resolutions are adopted without the general public understanding the significance of them. Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the father of Negro History Week, was the second African-American to receive a doctorate in history from Harvard. A professor of his challenged him to prove the Negro, as we were called then, had a history worth studying. Dr. Woodson then made it his life-work mission. In 1915, he formed the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. He launched a publication called The Journal of Negro History. His group of associates then set out on a mission to study the Negro history at a level where the poorest of segregated children could learn. This approach was quite different from what the scholar Dr. W.E. DeBose had done. He had taken a scholarly elitist approach to studying Negro history, and Dr. Woodson wanted it to be understood by anyone who was trying to learn of our contributions. His general aim was to study this history with an understanding that the Negro, after all, is not an inferior people, as has been portrayed, but simply a people who had been denied, setback, and whose progress had been impeded. The Carnegie Corporation and the Rockefeller Memorial Fund provided the funds for this to begin, so that publications could be put in public libraries and public schools. In 1976, the word Negro was changed to Black, Black History Month, from Negro History Week by the support of President Gerald Ford. The entire month then was designated as Black History Month. Public schools' curriculum continued to ineditively teach Black history, when those accomplishments or African-Americans have been credited with other races by omission. Renowned scholars today are saying there is no such thing as race and science, and there is nothing in anthropology and psychology to support myths of a superiority or an inferiority of any group of persons. There are those who ask in this era, is there a need for Black History Month? My explanation is, as long as man isn't empty enough to believe that skin color makes one person better than another, yes. When we continue to marginalize groups by their skin tone, we must take this history to the boardrooms, the classrooms, schools, and homes. We must ask ourselves, what is freedom? For such, Black History Month continues to fulfill a need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Would anybody else like to speak? Well, here comes a stranger.
How are you tonight? How are you?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
All right. There's so many things going on in the city right now. There's not one thing to pinpoint. But what I would like to ask is that, as we look at everything that is happening, we put things in a certain perspective. We all took an oath under God. And let's look at what God is. God is not a person, place, or a thing. God is a consciousness. So go home and reread your oath, and replace it with the words, "I take an oath under love, under peace, under joy, under compassion, under understanding," and then make all the decisions that you're making for the city. Because everything we've heard tonight over the past couple of months has been about humanities, and it's so much bigger than black or white. It's about we're losing our humanity at this point, because we're making decisions out of selfishness, out of greed, out of jealousy, out of anger, out of bitterness. And that comes in all shades and colors. America was supposed to be built on something great, under God. I don't know what God we serving, but I'm asking for the true and living God to come back. And I'm asking for the men who represent God to our community to be that. God is not something you talk about, it's something you do. It's a presence, it's an essence. And I'm asking you to have the essence of love when you make decisions for our community, to have an essence of peace in your heart, of understanding for all. Go find out somebody's story. When you have the honor of sitting on this board, and you don't take the time to listen to someone's story because of fact, figures, numbers, and money? The man just last week was talking about what you put into, what you observe is what you get. These are universal laws. These are God's laws. I know we have city laws and ordinances, but let's go back to the original law that all of these laws were made out of, the universal law of God. God says what you observe comes to you. So whatever you put more money to, that's what you're gonna get. So you put more money to the police department, you get more crime. You put less money to education, you get less people who have education levels to bring wealth here. The conversation is poverty. Poverty is a state of mind. You can raise minimum wage, you can create jobs and give everybody in the hood and everybody who's broke more money, but if they don't understand the purpose of money, we are still going to be in a poverty state. So right now, the poverty state of mind we are in is selfishness, is greed. We're in a time of change. So I'm asking you, for the last time, 'cause I'm not asking you, God sent me here to ask. And there's a lot of people asking, through the spirit of God, the three levels of creation, 'cause ye are God. Heaven is supposed to come back at this time. Thought, word, and deed are the three levels of creation. What have you thought about the people of this city? What have you said about them? And what have you put into place? And that's what you created, is this poverty. We need you to go back and create wealth through love, peace, joy, understanding. You are not here for you. You are here for a city. You took an oath. We're asking you to uphold it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Yes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Had the privilege of the nice technology work y'all doing with the broadcasting of the working minutes and stuff like that. And something came to my attention when the proposal that came to the board about the $4,000 laptops for the, I think it was police vehicles. And Councilman Foster was about the only one that really spoke up against that. And I think before we invest over $4,000 for a laptop for the police cars, we need to look at using that money look at using that money to put that into our people and the community. We invested all this money, I forgot what the total was, was about?
Eight hundred fifty thousand.
Eight hundred thousand dollars, and that was without the upgrades and all of that. So once you do that, you probably talk about a million dollars. You go nine hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's a million dollars. Imagine what we could do in the city if we invested a million dollars into our people. We won't need all these police cars. So I'm thinking, we just had the climate, you know, climate, climate justice just did that climate assessment of the area, the poverty and stuff like that. We got people that's not even making $10,000 a year in the city. But we looking at putting probably four, five thousand dollars computers in a police car. Need to get our priorities straight. So, and my second thing is this, I put in for one of the boards, probably six, seven months ago, the Community Relations Board, and I haven't heard anything back. I got, I received a phone call from a young lady, she acted, but I still interested in the board, and I said, "Yes." But that's as far as I've heard on it. So I don't know what's the process. Do y'all contact people, "Hey, you were turned down, you accepted?" Any information, I'd be real helpful.
No decision's been made. We haven't made those appointments yet. We're gonna do that in February. So in February, you will be notified.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Okay, and we'll close the public hearing, and thank you to all of y'all who did speak. I don't know why I did that, I'm sorry, but I wasn't supposed to do that. But anyway, we got the public hearing closed, or the public comment period closed, and now we're gonna move to consent agenda.
Mayor and council, your consent agenda, we had discussed earlier, consisted of items E, F, and G. Again, consent agenda items E, F, and G.
I'm gonna make a motion that we accept agenda items E, F, and G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Allen.
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Carton Dan.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Yes. All right, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we got items requiring individual action. Item H.
Two items. Rick is here to give you a presentation, or at least a brief update. We had discussed this topic before, but on your stormwater ordinance changes. Rick?
Yes, sir. Good evening again, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Like you said, item H, Amendment to Goldsboro's Code of Ordinances, Title V, Public Utilities, Chapter 54, Stormwater Management Utility. Faced with ever-increasing stormwater-related expenses driven by aging infrastructure and additional regulatory requirements, the City of Goldsboro established a stormwater management utility in July of 2017. The program was partially implemented with the understanding various sections mostly pertaining to non-single-family residential properties needed more research prior to full implementation. The City has since contracted with an experienced stormwater management consultant to address and work through those areas of interest over the past six months. As a result, concerns regarding fees, credits, exemptions, and appeals have been addressed in proposed attachment. The amendment includes establishing a declining block fee schedule based on a total equivalent residential unit for non-single-family residential properties. The rates presented were approved previously by City Council in December of 2017. There are also options for billing various non-single-family residential properties where there are multiple individual utility accounts, and the allocated in previous areas comparable to the single-family residential properties, each account will be billed the same rate as a single-family residential property. Additionally, credit will be given for functioning best practice, best management practices that treat 100% or more of the runoff from a non-single-family residential parcel. The credit can range anywhere from 10% to 20%. An appeal process has also been included. Appeal administrative decisions made by the Public Works Director will be heard by the city manager. Appeals to the city manager's determination constitute a quasi-judicial process and will be heard by the Board of Adjustment. It is recommended that the City Council adopt the attached ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 54, Stormwater Management Utility of the City of Goldsboro's Code of Ordinances. Just a quick review of some of the amendments. Amendment for 5402, basically we added definitions for best management practices and non-single-family residential properties. The amendment for 5405, there were three subsequent, the first one was simply to revise the paragraph and take out a reference to 5406. The second one was to insert existing fee schedule in reference to the one that was previously approved. The third amendment for 5405 was simply to remove a sub-paragraph entirely. Section 5406, basically inserted a paragraph to establish or outline credits. 5407 was revised as outlined, again, in reference to billing multifamily residential properties primarily. 5410 was revised to include an appeal process. Any questions?
Any questions? If not, you have a motion before you.
Move that up.
Second.
Any discussion? All, if everybody's right hand? Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Next, we got the site and landscape plan for the car wash.
Item I is site and landscape plans for the car wash, which is JL Gurley. The property is located on the west side of North William Street between Orange Street and 11th Street. The applicant's proposing the development of a two-bay automated car wash, with only one bay being developed initially. A mechanical room is proposed between the two car wash bays. Access to the site was proposed initially through two curb cuts. NC DOT reviewed the plans and recommended that the developer provide only one curb cut for both ride-in and ride-out access. The site plan on the screen has been revised to indicate the one curb cut. With the upgrading of North William Street, a median will be installed, which will prevent left-turn movements into and out of the site. Hours of operations for the car wash is 24 hours, seven days per week, and the developer has indicated that there are no vacuums on-site. The property will be served by city water and sanitary sewer. The submitted landscape plan indicates street trees, as well as the type A five-foot-wide buffers that are required to the north and south of the property, and there is an existing wooded area at the rear of the property which will serve as the type A required buffer. The Planning Commission at their meeting held on December the 18th recommended approval of the revised site and landscape plans to only show one curb cut to serve the property, and after concerns were expressed by an adjoining owner, the council on January the 8th deferred action on this request. Staff has discussed with the applicant, as well as the concerned citizen, and both are satisfied with the proposed revisions. It is by motion accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve the site and landscape plans to the, subject to revision to show one curb cut providing ride-in and ride-out access. Any questions?
Questions? All right, you have a motion before you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All, if everybody's right hand? Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Next, we got the city manager's report.
Mayor and council, two items. One, our Channel 10 broadcast, we had a technology issue. We've replaced that piece of equipment, so those at home that might have been watching and wondering what was going on, we did have an equipment failure, we did replace that, and I hope we'll be through those for the time being. The rebroadcast should include all the meetings, so members watching on Channel 10 will be able to see that as well. The second item, we did have a number of employees recognized for store awards. Just to remind the community, and as you run into individuals, if they see our employees doing something they see above and beyond, the community can recommend our employees for the store award as well. We've had at least two submissions that we have brought to you that were employees, were seen by somebody in the community who made that recommendation, and I would just encourage the community, if they see our employees doing what they believe to be above and beyond, to get in contact with my office or wherever they know a contact, and we'll be happy to help them through that process. So that's all I have this evening.
All right, Mr. Attorney?
I don't have a report.
All right, we do have the Black History proclamation. Before I do that, I do want to say one thing, she called, our Facebook Live at 5:00 is working, because I had a text on the way over here, and I was told that the reason we're not reaching enough teenagers on our jobs program is because we had said something about Facebook and teenagers Twitter and Instagram. I need to change my approach. So I'm letting you know that the person that saw this, let them know that I got a text and I appropriately notified you. And reading the Black History Month part, I'm like, "Oh, I don't know why I'm reading this, because Ms. Evans about said everything in it." But I'm gonna do it anyway, and let's see. Whereas, the 2018 theme for National Black History Month is African-Americans in Times of War, chronicling the important roles of African-Americans in every war that evoked a sense of Black culture and history. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. Whereas Dr. Carter G. Woodson, known as the father of Black History, initiated Negro History Week in February 1926. And for many years, the second week of February chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln was celebrated by African-Americans in the United States. Whereas in 1976, Negro History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month, and is now celebrated all over North America. Whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, advanced the cause of civil rights, and strengthened families and communities. Whereas African-Americans have made significant contributions as leaders at the highest levels of the military, businesses, education, law, government, arts, sports, and religion. Therefore, I, Chuck Allen, Mayor of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2018 as Black History Month in the City of Goldsboro, and encourage all citizens to observe this month by participating and supporting all festivities celebrated the proud heritage of African-Americans. So I do offer that proclamation, and I will say, kind of follow up on what Pinky said, I would like to say, this would be a great month and a great time for everybody to reach out to somebody that doesn't look like you, doesn't like you, don't live in your neighborhood, and just get their story. And I think we all should do more of that. Sometimes it's hard, but I think one of the things we gotta do as a community is reach out to those that aren't like us, that don't think like us, and try that. So I do appreciate Pinky's comments on that, and I do think that everybody ought to do that, and we'll all be better for it. Because I have learned one thing as mayor, everybody has a story, and everybody's story is sometimes nothing like what you thought it might have been. And so I do encourage all our citizens to do that. So with that, we'll do council member comments. Councilmember Williams, start with you.
Sure. Just want to follow up with the summer youth program. If the parents haven't brought their children out, January 31st, they're gonna have another orientation. Please try to make that orientation. We want this to be a successful summer program, to keep our kids out of trouble, to give them the skills they need to know how important it is to have a job, to be able to contribute to their homes as well. So please make sure, parents, you get the kids out, show up, so we can get them working. We've been fighting really hard to try to keep these kids busy, so please bring them out. Also pertaining to the resources that we were gonna use for the laptops for the police and the firemen, I also, I did respond to that, and I asked if there was any grants or any grant, grant applications that were pushed so that we could get money that way. So I do make sure that I'm following up to see if we are spending our money, our taxpayers' money correctly. So.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Broadway?
I have one thing, and I had two people call me on talking about our sanitation workers. And during this cold snap, last cold snap we had, two people on two different streets in my district called and said, "Those guys went to the back of the house, some older people, and also some people that were not really old or any..." They forgot. And those guys, in that cold and ice and everything, went and got their trash can, and in a couple of cases, even took it back from where they knew where they were older. They don't get enough praise, so that's my point.
Councilmember Stevens?
Have two different things to talk about. One, echoing Councilman Williams in regards to our summer youth program, and this goes out to everyone in my district, please bring your children out January 31st, and please bring them for the mandatory meeting, is what they're saying. We really didn't want it to be mandatory, Councilman Foster and Councilman Williams, we didn't want it to be that way, because I guess it kind of puts strain on everyone. But I would like for everybody to please come out and show support, because this is a really great effort in trying to die down the crime and all the negativity they're saying about our city and in reference of our county. In regards with Ms. Broad O'Brien, it keeps us, you know, the youth away from opiates and other elements out there. And then also, I said something earlier, and I was unaware what I was speaking about, but I have to, oh, Councilman Williams, an apology in that regard, because I was invited to a meeting with Amy Bauer and Mr. Joe Bauer, and them, for the 35th U.S. Color Troop Regiment. And their historical group is bringing this unique fact and men together for our community to show support for African-American troops that are part in the Civil War. But also, at the same time, I was unaware that that group was not part of the historical district. They had historical district and historical board members there, but they were not part of the historical board. So that leads me to what I'm gonna say, that any board that the city has, that anyone feels that is not diverse with both men, women, of both color, all races, creeds, and religion, please come to us and ask to be a part of this board, whether you have low to moderate or low income, or you are high in moderate income. I don't care what you are, but I ask you to come and be a part of this city, because it didn't take one person and one race to build this city. It was all of us together. So please come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Ham?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I spoke last meeting about the outstanding service that our city workers gave to our residents during the freeze that we had. And I have to say that I want to speak again to commend our city employees for the service that they provide, the attributes that they all possess. And the first attribute that they all possess is professionalism. But there's another attribute that we saw demonstrated here tonight, and that's compassion. These men, and women too, there are women, but not represented tonight, have shown us in many occasions of their compassion to not only their fellow men, but their residents of this city. It does my heart good, as I've said before, to see that amongst our civil service employees. It says to me that they think as highly of this city and the residents of this city as we do. And it's very rewarding to see example after example of that, and I commend those individuals that work for this city, and I am proud to say that I am part of this city as well. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Foster?
Yes. I'm gonna read a email received on Friday, January 19th. Mayor and City Council, we had two shootings this morning within minutes of each other. Investigators are working to determine whether, determine what occurred and if these are related. First one, Slocum and Harrell, which is near the former Bob's convenience store, shoot not believed, not believed to be associated with the store. Officers followed a vehicle, five people in it to Carolina Street where they jumped out of the vehicle. We have three individuals in custody. Second one, 900 Block of Hughes Street, victim shot three times, has been taken away from Memorial, and in condition in his grave. My problem that I have with this is, this corner of Slocum and Harrell is in my district. It's a store that I asked council to not agree to let the store owner open. The store sits on one corner, church sits on the next. The store parking lot is actually the corner of Slocum and Harrell. And our city manager says that shooting is not believed to be associated with the store. No shootings occurred at this store while it was closed. And the same store owner is the store owner that was in the building down the street for three years. Building was condemned, marked condemned, was able to stay in and operate for three years. I ride by the store every day, trash, guys hanging out. It's, I mean, it looks a mess. And these are things that are happening at this store, and it gonna probably continue to happen. But only Councilman Williams voted with me on this subject and on this matter, while the rest of the council felt that the store should be open, but this is what happened at the store already. So I just want to make, put this into the public so the public can know, this is the reason why I voted against the store, because of things like this, and hopefully trying to prevent things like this from happening, and to give those citizens down at that end of town a better quality of store. You know, back in the day, when I was growing up, that was Bob's supermarket, it was Brookside. No matter where you lived at in Goldsboro, you traveled to those two stores to buy your meats, groceries... to buy your meats, groceries, or whatever. This store has nothing of quality. Nobody's coming from the other side of Ash Street, even the other side of Harris Street to buy anything from this store because it has no quality, no anything in there worth anything. So I think at some point we need to readdress this because recently we have approved the extended hours, which causes people to hang out even longer. But this is something that I definitely want to address the council about, something that we need to take seriously, and we need to take action on it soon. Because when we have the hotel or something going on there, we're quick to shut it down, but we're not quick to act on this. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, Councilmember Foster. Councilmember Raycock?
Just to sort of reiterate some comments that have been made about our city employees. You know, the Monday after the first snowstorm, I got a phone call from a businessman here in Goldsboro whose family runs a plumbing business. And he was saying shortly after the snow of two weeks ago that he was assessing whether it's safe for his plumbers to get out on the streets to handle people's frozen pipes. And he said that where he lived, he went to Walnut Street, and he said it was clear. He went to Mulberry Street, and it was clear. And he said he went to Ash Street, and he said it hadn't been plowed or anything. And he wanted to know what was the difference. And I told him, we handled Walnut and Mulberry, the state handled Ash Street. And he said, well, let me tell you, your guys did a terrific job, and I just want you to let it know, but our guys do an excellent job always. Once in a while, you get somebody who may not do exactly what you want, but these guys are well-intended, and we have great employees that I appreciate.
That's it?
Thank you, sir. I do have two announcements I want to make of two upcoming events I think people would want to know about, and that way try to get it on everybody's schedule. Our Interfaith Breakfast is February fifteenth at nine o'clock at the Goldsboro Event Center. And this is a partnership between the city, the county, Seymour Johnson. We host this event annually. Three local ministers will speak there, and they're just gonna do a brief message, and the theme is, where do we go from here? So I would encourage everyone to come to that if they could. Also, our Human Relations Banquet is February twenty-sixth at six-thirty. This is again at the Event Center on Slocum Street. And this is a partnership with the county, and there we recognize all the folks who contribute their time throughout the year to promote better human relations in Goldsboro and Wayne County. So these are two really important events coming up, and so I would encourage everyone to come to those if they can because this is where we can talk about diversity, inclusiveness, and all the things that we're working on. So I would encourage everybody. Lastly, she just got up and left, so she's not gonna know I talked about her till later, which is probably good. But I did want to speak and recognize Ms. Brandy Matthews. She was here sitting on the road a minute ago, but she came to see me last weekend. If you're on Fossil Street or Slocum Street, she's got these blessing boxes up. And I think she's been really successful, people helping her put stuff in them. She monitors them, put stuff in, and people go in and get the things they need out of it and restock it and all. But she was telling me about it, and I was really impressed with what she was saying she had going on there. So if anybody feels the need to help her with these blessing boxes, I'm sure she would appreciate it, and her number's on the box. So if you ride by, there's one at Slocum, and there's one over on Fossil Street. So I just encourage you to see that, to try to help because I'm sure the people getting stuff out of those boxes are people that need it.
Ms. Mayor, let me interrupt. She also set the poles yesterday in concrete for a third location on...